To the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Temple City Unified on this day Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty five. We'd like to call the meeting to order. First, we would start with roll call. Member Sneed.
Here.
Member Georgino.
Here.
Member Espinoza.
Here.
Member Smith.
Here.
And I am here. And student board member, Mr. Munoz. Okay, excellent. All right. Tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded. And next, we have our pledge of allegiance led by our student board member, Sir Xavier Munoz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone may be seated. All right, okay. Next, do we have any changes in our agenda this evening?
No changes.
All right, excellent, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve our agenda this evening. May I get a second, please? Second by member Munoz, okay. Preferential vote, member Munoz. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carried, five zero. Next, we, okay, I'm not going to screw this one up. We do not have any special recognition presentation this evening. So we're going to move on to public comment on agendized and non-agendized items, and we do have one comment this evening from none other than Mr. Jambeian. Please, come on up.
I would like to reserve my comments until the end, if possible.
Oh, okay, sure, we could absolutely do that. All right, will do, okay. Uh, next, we have community updates. Well, the one that is first and foremost is we would like to welcome and invite the community to our stadium's grand opening this coming Friday, September twelfth. And I believe doors open at five P M., is that correct? And we are also going to have our Historical Society display a lot of memorabilia in relation to our Temple City High School football program, so that'll be exciting to see. And also, as a reminder, the Historical Society Museum will be open this coming Sunday, the fourteenth, from eleven to two P M. And, you know, we encourage the community that's interested to learn more about the history of Temple City to, you know, please pay them a visit. The other thing that we have coming up is on September twentieth and twenty first, we have the High Autumn Festival that's happening at Temple City Park. And that is a celebration of the Autumn Festival. It's something that I believe that most Asian communities revere. And next, we have, on the twenty seventh, we have our Fall Harvest Festival, and that's going to run from ten to two o'clock. And it's going to feature, I would suppose, most, if not all, of our performing arts group that day, so that should be a really fun and exciting time for all the folks. Okay, and then finally, on October fourth, and that's also on a Saturday, we have a fundraiser for Pride of Temple City's Band and Guard. And they're going to have a buncow night at Temple City High School at six P M. It's going to be held in room, or room six oh one. There will be silent auction and raffle prizes. The cost is thirty dollars per person, and dinner is included. I don't know where you would find a deal better than that. I, I, you know, and I, I hope that all of you out there that are listening, please stop by and support our amazing performing arts group, so. And that concludes my community update for this evening. Next, we have bargaining unit comments. CSEA one oh five, Ms. Wong. All right, well, hi, how are you? Uh, next, we have CSEA eight twenty three. All right, good to see you, Jazz. All right. And next, we have Temple City Education Association. Excellent. All right. Next, let's move on to district updates. First, we have Business Services.
Good evening, I must have seen here. Today, the district received forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, the first batch of checks for reimbursement from the January seventh wind damage. So we are continuing work our J P adjuster and in regarding the tree replacement at our campus, as well as the fence replacement at the high school. So the second report is as the part of effort for continuing to improve our food service meal. And this month, our Subway sandwich has been extended to secondary school. So we anticipate that we will offer the Subway sandwich at Oak and High School. And last Friday, our barbecue, the traditional grill, come back. And we are so happy that Dr. Kuna and Principal Lee will help and guiding us and then pass the hamburger. And I want to thank our high school kitchen staff and their, due to the staff shortage and then changing the meal, it is a lot on their plate. But they, they made it. So thank the director and staff for their commitment and hard work. Tomorrow, we will had bond oversight committee, committee meeting, and we called the citizen oversight committee meeting at district office at five thirty. And we will present the annual measure S financial report to the committee member, and we also provide update for the high school project. So all the community member, if you want to know more about our project and how we spend a lot of money, please join us at five thirty at the D O, at this room. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Ed Services, Doc, Dr. Angers, how are you?
Good evening. I wanted to start off by thanking Christian Castro, one of our counselors at the high school, for taking the time to come to our leadership meeting last week. She trained all of our principals in suicide prevention, provided them with a PowerPoint so that they're able to share with their counselors and go back and provide training to staff across the district. And she has a very thorough plan this year on how she's going to implement the Aware Grant that we've received. So Darrell and I are looking forward to supporting her with the implementation of that grant this year. Also, I wanted to thank our first and our fifth grade teachers. They were first out the gate to participate in our Wonders English Language Development Training. At the back of the boardroom, you can't see it on camera for those of you that are at home, but those of us sitting in the room, we are surrounded by some E L D Wonders training materials. We left them up so that you had a chance to be able to see some of the artifacts that have been part of that training for our elementary teachers. And I have to say, it is a very difficult time, of course, to be out of the classroom, leaving subplans when teachers are first starting to get to know their students. However, we wanted to make sure we provided the training at the beginning of the year so that they have these resources to be able to support them all throughout the year. And the evaluations that we have been receiving from the teachers is overwhelmingly positive. So even though it's a challenge, and I appreciate them taking the time to write those plans, I believe that it has been a very productive time. So our sixth grade teachers will be in this room tomorrow, participating in the training. And trainings will continue throughout the month of September and October for each of our elementary grade levels. And then also, I just wanted to thank all of the parents and staff volunteers who have been willing to step up to serve on various committees at the school sites. Right now, principals are currently reaching out to fill positions for school site council, English Language Advisory Committees, as well as our District L cap Committee. So we are grateful to all the staff members that have volunteered to either be on an election ballot or continue for a second year and serve on those committees. So thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much for sharing that. Next, we have Human Resources, Mr. Lowman.
Good evening. Two things tonight. The first one is H R is in the beginning stages of CAL SASS review and submission. CAL SASS is the California statewide assignment accountability system. The system developed by the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing that monitors California Certified Educator assignments to ensure they are appropriately authorized and assigned. That's a mouthful. Just making sure that our teacher's in the correct spots. And so it helps us identify if teachers are not, and then like gives us the opportunity to address some of those things. My second one is, just a reminder, open enrollment for our health benefits begins next week. Part of this process is that all, all of our eligible employees have the opportunity to sit down with American Fidelity and go through their, their health benefits, benefits plan and any supplemental stuff they want. So it is a busy time in H R. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next, we have Board Member Comments, and this evening, we will, we'll start with Member Smith.
Great, thank you. Try to be brief. Let's see, back on August twenty ninth, I attended the Chamber Legislative Luncheon across the street at the community room. And I want to, the featured speaker was Brian Cook, who told us about some things going on with the city. But I really just wanted to say in general, the chamber's been doing an excellent job of finding speakers and providing nice meals and whatnot, and I want to recognize them for that. On the thirty first, had a, my wife and I had the chance and, and one of my sons to go to Scott Sherman's wedding. So Scott got married on the thirty first, his wife's name is Jocelyn Oriana, and she is a former employee here at the district office, so it was nice to see them there. Let's see, on the sixth and seventh this past weekend, I helped A C, American Cancer Society, and the Relay for Life to do some fundraising at the Santa Anita Race Track. And I think it went pretty well. By most accounts, people were able to raise more money this year than we have been for the last couple of years, so that's nice to see. The valley will stop and the mountain will start to climb. Uh, let's see. Lastly, I, I'm, I think it's lastly, I'm looking forward to welcoming our Australia Sister City Exchange students on the twenty first. And I hope that they enjoy their time in the U S as much as we, and students and the adults recently went to Australia enjoyed. And I have, have one more item, and I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say anything about it involving Mike Fong's office late this afternoon. Oh, okay, good. Saw a notification that Ashley Kim, Tim Kitch and Kristen McClure were recognized by Mike Fong, or are being recognized by Mike Fong as outstanding educators. So that was nice to see. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Member Espinoza.
I will also be brief. I don't have very much, but I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to the upcoming events, Friday's football game and Monday's Girls Flag Football Game. I, I also want to say that I'm really excited about this bond measure survey and research. I think that we've done an excellent job and been good stewards of the city, the community members' money for this project that we just finished. And we want, I, I personally feel like we, we need to continue to meet where our students are and where we want them to be. And we really just can't do that without some type of assistance like this. So I hope our community members will really look at, keep track of what's going on with the bond, what, what's going on with the research, and what is going on as we progress to see if this is something we want to do. And, you know, I think our kids deserve it. They work so hard, and especially in the sciences and in the, and the performing arts. I think they, they, we need to meet where they are and meet where we want them to be. So that, and let's see. Also, you know, in, in listening to Connie, I do want to thank our food services folks. They have really, you know, worked really hard to get changes implemented and to any, to everybody that's been involved in those changes, looking and listening, accepting feedback. And, you know, I really appreciate them just hanging in there and, you know, working really hard to, you know, give the kids what they, you know, something that they will like and something that they want to eat. So thank you so much, food services folks, for all your work. And that's all.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Member Sneed.
Thank you, President Bell. I attended a few items, also, events since our last meeting. I also attended the Chamber Luncheon. Brian Cook, who's city manager, really did a great job of explaining some of the issues coming up. And I'm really thankful that the district and the city have such a good, close working relationship. Last Saturday, I attended the kickoff for the eighty-second Camellia Festival. The theme this year is Camellia Palooza. It was, and it was suggested by a third grader from Longdon called Sage Guerrero. And I think it's just going to be a great theme to inspire everybody to have a great time. I'm the float chairman, so I just know our floats are just going to have a lot of fun interpreting that, that theme. Tonight, we're considering a proclamation recognizing his Hispanic Heritage Month. And I appreciate all the contributions that our local Latin and Hispanic families have made as they add to the diversity of our district. We are very grateful for what you've added to our district. Congratulations to Kristen McClure and Ashley Dimkitch for being recognized as, by Mike Fong's office, as twenty twenty-five outstanding educators. I know the community is very excited about the soft opening of our new stadium Friday. When we passed Measure S so many years ago, I know the families were happy to see the improvements at our school sites. But at the same time, there was always a question, okay, so when are we getting a new stadium? We are. Over the last year, we saw it go from an empty lot with piles of rubble to just the most remarkable sports complex. That's like, it's taken, it's taken shape, and it just looks like the most perfectly shaped puzzle that's fitting together now. And I just think, I can't wait for our soft opening this Friday, just so the community can actually get out there and see it. One, one last thing, every year, we have a chance to honor our excellent teachers and classified employees of the year. And occurred to, I mentioned this to Dr. Kuna last week. It occurred to me recently that many of our recent district teachers of the year reflect the importance that our district places on the arts. For Matt Byers, Kyle Smith, Me He Kim, and this year's Lacy Scanlon, each of them have played a really big part in keeping the arts alive for our students. And I, I know we all look forward to joining Lacy as she's honored by the County Office of Education. So Temple City, you're doing well. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Next, we have Member Georgina.
Thank you. I just wanted to first add on to the community update about the buncow. I have tickets. So if anybody would like to buy a ticket, I can make it real easy for you. I will hand deliver it. Because it's going to be a fundraiser to raise money for their field show this year, so it's a real important fundraiser. I also attended the, my colleagues, the Legislative Luncheon where Brian Cook spoke, and the Camellia Festival kickoff, which was really great. I attended a football game against La Puente. Didn't go exactly how we would have liked it, but it was still a lot of fun. It's always great to see the kids out there, running around and all the cheerleaders rooting for our school, so I enjoy it. Finally, today, I got a tour of the dual language classes at Longdon, and thank you Art and Stacy for arranging that. It was really interesting how they do it. The teachers are doing an amazing job. And it's so cute to see those little kids just soaking it all in. And I'm really excited about this program. I hope to maybe go back towards the end of the year and see how they've progressed. But congratulations to everybody involved in that, because it's going to be a great program. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And finally, I guess it must be me. I wanted to share that, you know, in regards to the food services. So, you know, I do work with certain groups of high school students for certain things. And it was funny, because on one of those meetings, the first thing they said is, we're hours. And I said, what are you talking about? And they said, Subway. We heard you gave Subway to elementary school kids. So I said, well, I can't answer that question, but you just did. So if you're watching, there, there is your answer, so. And I think they're really thrilled by that. And, you know, the comments have been really, really good. And they actually also commented that they liked the food tasting. They thought that was a really good idea. So thought I wanted to share that, so please share that with our food services department. They're doing a great job with helping us kind of revitalize and, and make lunch interesting for our students, so. And also, I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to attend the recognition for both Ms. Dimkitch and Ms. McClure. Both outstanding teachers have been with us for quite a long time and, and very deserving of that award. And of course, with this coming Friday, it's, it's going to be really kind of not a watershed one, but it's, it, you know, some of us here, myself included, we were on those campaign committees, making those calls, getting the community interested in, in supporting that bond, the Measure S bond back in twenty twelve. And all of us here were more than likely involved in some shape, way, or form. And though Donna and I, you know, we spent quite a bit of time along with some community members, just night after night, making all these phone calls and talking to parents and, and community members. And to see it finally here, and it's, it seems, seems like such a great feeling, especially as we do this on Friday. And we see the ideas that we brought forth to the community and how now it's real. And so as Member Espinoza shared as well, we're, we're hoping that the community can see that we've been good stewards of public funds and that they would support us again, the community would support us again to, to continue this tradition of excellence, as I call it, to help support the future generation of students, because it really does make a difference. The new classroom buildings were, were, were just, just so timely, so needed. So, and along with all the improvements all across the district. So we're hoping that, you know, the community, if you're listening out there, we really need your support. So we look forward to this information that we're going to get this evening. And that is it for me this evening. And next, we have Student Board Member Comment, Mr. Munoz. All right, thank you so much for that. Next, we have Superintendent Comments, Dr. Kuna.
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate Ashley and Kristen on being recognized by Assembly Member Fong's office. I think it's very well deserved. I will say, if you are planning on going, I just got an email from his office. They changed the time now to five to seven on Saturday, five P M. to seven P M. So I'm hoping that our honorees are still going to be able to go, because it was kind of a last minute change on, on them. But I think, since it is, and, and this is why I believe that a lot of our legislators are not going to be able to make it to our September twelfth kickoff event, is because it's the last day of session for them, and now they've been called into an early morning session on Saturday. And so that is why they had to push that event back. So hopefully, at least they will be able to still make it. I, I should still be able to as well. So hopefully at least they will be able to still make it. I, I should still be able to as well. I wanted to echo what some of the board members shared about our bond and, and the, the need to continue to really just push forward. It would be very easy for us to just kind of rest on our laurels with a really successful project, in my opinion, at the high school right now with the sports complex. But we need to keep going. There, there's, there's a lot more we need to do for our students and for our community. And I, and I think Member Espinoza shared it well, like we do have a need in the sciences. We have a need in the arts. We have a need for safety items. We, there are needs all over. And, and you'll probably see just in looking at Connie's presentation tonight, you know, we, we don't receive the level of funding we need in order to keep to provide, keep providing these opportunities for our students. So we really do rely on the community support there. I wanted to give a, a thank you and shout out to the Balfour Beatty team. Whether it is donating hot dogs for Friday's event, they donated a thousand hot dogs for us to give out to the first thousand people that go get them. They donated shirts for us to be able to sell that commemorate the night. They have pushed the subcontractors on overtime that they have been taking care of. They worked Saturday and Sunday this last week. All in order to help us have as much done as possible for this event. And there are a lot of things that are just beyond their control, but they continue to push and I appreciate that. And I know that I probably drive them a little too hard, but I, you know, I acknowledged with them on Tuesday just how appreciative we all are of it. You know, this is, again, this is an opening of the stadium. It's not an opening of the complex. And so as, you know, the fact that they're getting as much done for us as possible so that we can showcase a lot of the, the stadium or the complex itself, I, I am very appreciative of. And, and you know, we, we at one point had thought there was no chance we were going to have locker rooms. And we're going to have locker rooms for, for the kids to be able to be in on, on Friday. We won't have all of our restrooms, but we should have all of our women's restrooms done, which is the more important piece, right? That's what I said too. So. So, you know, we're, we're working on it concessions may not look the way we want it to, but hopefully they can get, get it done to the point where it looks good. But at the very least, it will be usable. And I'm thankful that we caught a break in weather and it's only supposed to be 80 degrees on Friday.
That's nice.
But just being out there in the evening or late afternoon, I, I'm so happy for our PTA in that concession stand because it is nothing but shade. And there is a nice breeze that comes through. They're not looking in the sun. So even if we don't have everything up, it should still be comfortable for them. I also wanted to give a shout out to Elias and Mike Kidd for the work that they're doing to get the video board done, the sound done and everything else, which I think we, we released it to you like with a week and a half or something. Like it's, it's a crazy amount of time for you to be able to get a lot of that stuff going. And the, the graphics are so cool. Like I, I am so pleased with what we have going on over there. I know when we've had kids out there, they, they stop and they, they take pictures of the board. Like everything out there is really just state of the art. And so I, I'm so happy for what we're delivering for our students. And then, oh, for the lunch, I, I also wanted to follow up. Elena and I were out there helping. And Elena had a couple of the, the students at the high school when we did the barbecue come to her and say, I don't know my lunch number because I haven't bought a lunch in years. But they were in line for, for our barbecue. And so I was like, that is what we needed to hear, you know? Kids that we have not been accessing with lunch, we're now in line for lunch. And Connie knows that we, we need to keep that going as well. And we will. So, you know, there's things that are going to take a little bit of time, but we're moving in the right direction there. And then on a, a more somber note, I, I just want to say, I, and I don't know if you've been following the news and I'm sure you have, but I am just so saddened by the world we live in right now. No matter when you turn on the news, it is just filled with hatred and violence and a lack of patience and just disdain for people in general. And I, and I, my fear is these are the, the examples we are setting for kids. And how do we expect this not to spill over onto our kids? And so I, I am glad that we're recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. I, I think we need to do our part to, to spread more positivity. Our kids deserve it. It's just, you know, it, it's a heavy, heavy load right now. And I just don't think the adults are doing what they need to for our kids. So that's.
All right. Thank you. I agree with that. Next, written communications. We do have one written communication from the Los Angeles County Office of Education. And this is in regards to our LCAP and budget approval. So the LA County Superintendent of Schools has received and completed our review of the Temple City Unified School District's Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is LCAP, and adopted budget for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026. And based upon their review, they have determined that the district's LCAP meets all the criteria and is approved. So. And next, also pursuant to Education Code Section 42127, the county superintendent has completed our review and analysis of your district's adopted budget for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026. And that review has resulted in approving the district's budget with the following comments and concerns. And it says that they strongly advise that the district address its ongoing structural deficit and take necessary actions to improve the unrestricted general fund balance. And I'll be honest, I think every school district up and down California gets that statement. So I don't think that's, you know, necessarily isolated to us. It's just something that I think the Office of Education just likes to remind every school district to be mindful about how they're spending their budget. So, you know, I, I just, you know, I think on behalf of the board, we want to thank everyone on the staff that helped to get us approved for the fiscal year. We know there's so many moving pieces and a lot of people getting involved and making sure this all comes together. So again, thank you to everyone for that. I really appreciate it. And that's it for written communications. We do not have any discussion, information item, topics to talk about this evening, but we do have some discussion, action, agenda items that may require discussion, but upon which the board is expected to take action during the meeting. And first, we have the adoption of Resolution 252607, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month theme for 2025, which is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. And I, you know, I think that's, that's, that's very meaningful and especially in today's times. Is there anything that we?
Yeah, no, I, I, I just wanted to, to follow up with the, the fact that, you know, a lot of our Hispanic families, they, they are living in fear right now. And when you again hear about Supreme Court rulings and, and how that affects families, I just wanted to make sure that, that our families know that we see them, we recognize them and, and we value them. So.
Likewise, yes. I agree with that. All right. Okay.
I'll motion.
Okay. Motion by Member Espinoza.
I'll second.
Second by Member Snead. Okay. If there are no comments from my fellow board members, let's go ahead and vote. This is a roll call vote, but let's start with the preferential vote. Member Munoz? Okay. All right. So, all right. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
I am a yes. Member Georgina?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. Next, on Ed, with Ed Services, we have Item 17A. The approval of opening a public hearing to discuss the sufficiency of textbooks and/or instructional materials. Dr. Ayers, is there anything that, I mean, we covered this before. So is this procedural at this point?
Yes, this is a procedural item each year to make sure that we have the sufficiency of textbooks.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. May I get a motion? Moved by Member Smith. Second by Member Georgina. Preferential vote, Member Munoz? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is now open at six oh five. Public. Okay. All right. Next, we'll move on to the next part of this, which is 17B. The approval of closing of a public hearing to discuss the sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Preferential vote, Member Munoz?
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be happy to make that motion.
Thank you. I apologize.
I'll second.
Yes. Okay. Member Smith and Member Espinoza? Member Munoz? Okay. All right. And all those in favor? All those opposed? Cut the two complete. I knew I was going to screw something up this evening. That was the one. Okay. All right. Next, we have 17C. The adoption of Resolution 252608, certifying the sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials. It's a Williams Act requirement. And I believe that I will make a motion for this. Can I get a second, please? Second by Member Georgina. Preferential vote, Member Munoz? Okay. And this one also happens to be a roll call. Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
I am a yes. Member Georgina?
Yes.
Member Snead?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have Business Services. We have Item 18, approval of the 2024, 2025 unaudited actual financial reports.
Yes. Thank you. So Board, this is a routine approval for the unaudited actual. That's for the 24, 25 school year. And this is a beautiful stadium. I took a picture from our press box.
Wow.
Of course. I'm mature. Sorry, Jerry. Hope you, you approve. Hope you approve. Thank you. So we as a public entity, we operate the environment is what happened in the nation, what happened in the state will reflect on our book. So behind the number of the book, there's a story. So here's the story. So 24, 25 is a very interesting year. So Board and we all know that there's a lot of happening the beginning of the 2025. We have a new president occupied the White House and the change comes. First of immigration law. Immigration law starting in 24, 25 school year. And on my book, we have not seen the impact yet, but we may in 25, 26. So Dr. Kuna mentioned that it had impacted Hispanic family and we see it, we hear it, but have not hit our book yet. So this one, the tariffs. So we also in our business that no kids left behind for this tariffs war. Looks like no country left behind. Because why? It's a war against Canada, Mexico, China, India, and all European countries. So what's that impact? The impact is moist as the eye. We ran through the PO, ordered our bachelor book because why? We try to save the district money. But we only save in 24, 25. But how about the 25, 26? Our expenditure will be high. This one inflation, it has hit our book. So, so for example, we starting hire contractor to do the maintenance work, which our skillful worker cannot handle because of lack of tool, lack of manpower, lack of time, right? Right now, when you talk about the repair, there's a line item say truck loading fee, $250. When first we receive the email, say, what is this truck loading fee? They say, you know, that because our cost is increased so that the district have to pay for the use of their tool. And then the other thing we saw is the contract. So I'm glad that our director of special ed is, is here. And she and I both see that the contract service for the special ed increase a lot. And our book should. I will give you the more information. So this one already showed our book, this will, and this may. So what happened from Sacramento? We talked about from Capitol Hill is expenditure. So let's talk about Sacramento in regarding the revenue. The border, we all know that the majority funding will receive from Sacramento. So the, the 24, 25, the COLA is only 1.07%. This is over 4.15% decrease from 23, 24. 22, 23, our COLA is 13.26. This is 12.15 decrease from 22, 23. So our revenue is decreased a lot. On the other hand, category program, 23, 24, we have a new program called the Position 28 VIPA program. This program is ongoing to 24, 25. And then 24, 25, we do not receive any new monies. And then that year, our COVID, COVID-19 funding is gone because of we want to meet the spending deadline. So we have more cost and less revenue. What happened January 7th? The mother nature, fire. We are lucky that our school is safe, but not Pasadena Unified School District. This is us, right? We have impact. All our school has impact. The trees are falling down, debris, $10,000 deductible for, for our insurance. And the most coming because in the future premium, we will be increased. That is the environment, business environment we are operating. What happened to us? Good things happened in Temple City Unified School District. As I mentioned, that COVID-19 money is done at the end of 24, 25. We did the science textbook adoption and Stacy can speak more. We spread two years. But however, the money is the majority money paid is in the 24, 25. So, so our book science textbook adoption is $1.4 million. And then we settled for the negotiation. Our leadership from Union are here. We settled for 0.6% for all our members. And we gave employee one time reimbursement, one time funding for a one time check and ongoing the district contribution for the health is $250 in 24, 25. This is the great project we just mentioned. That we finished the, this is ongoing project and this is now. So we are working different area and the tennis court, this is the baseball, I think. Yeah. So this happened in, in the district. So this is our book. The book is reflect the cost, the increase of costs and the decrease of, of the revenue. So unrestricted general fund is really our main operation fund. The healthy of unrestricted general fund represent the healthy of the district financial statement. So for unrestricted general fund, we are deficit spending for $2.2 million. Although our any funding balance compared with other district, we're still strong. But we really need a close monetary. And one of the close monetary, I approve every paycheck right now, not paycheck to employee, paycheck to the vendor. Because, because why? It's very, if you talk out of, of control the budget, but we just like pay the people without, pay the vendors without close monitoring. And then there's a possibility our budget will be at a risk. The unrestricted, unrestricted general fund deficit spend did not mean that much because sometime, the looks like, we have couple of program. So, cash flow program will receive the money, but we spend right now. We have educated effective grant, we have other music instruction program, we receive the money year before, we spend money right now. So, you look at that, we, the revenue is nineteen million dollars, the expenditure thirty-six point nine. It's really we just spend the money we receive early. And then, the two program, I mentioned that the spending deadline is twenty-five, twenty-six. So, so this will not mean that much, but this do. This is our combined restricted unrestricted general fund, how we spend our money in twenty-four, twenty-five. We have the certified employee thirty-seven percent, classified employee fourteen percent, employee benefit twenty-one, books supply five percent. Normally, without textbook adoption, books supply normally around three percent of entire budget. Because of textbook adoption, this is a high. And there are other operation expenditure, sixteen point four million dollars, eighteen percent. This is also a little bit high. Normally, before the infraction, inflation is liberal under fifty percent. And we have a capital outlay, capital outlay is mainly is cash flow program. So, it's, it's we starting the replace the H V A C, we, that's a main project. And that is also going transfer. This is the special ed. Before pandemic, our other outgoing transfer out is under one minute, one percent. This time, we hit three percent. And the two point two million dollar is the payment for the special ed program. So, so that is a challenger we, we have right now. So, we have other fund, and three of fund I listed here is the self-support fund, which is adult education, child development, and food service. The good news is this three self-fund program, they are not deficit spending, and they, there are any funding balance when we close twenty-four, twenty-five, actually is higher. So, so there, the three program is running very well. So, this five fund is also all facility-related funding. And then, default maintenance is really for facility maintenance. And then, bond, we spent all the bond money for the measure as twenty, fund twenty-one. And then, we did receive the bond board approval to issue this measure S R A D, which is closed in January, so that will show up in the twenty-five, twenty-six book. But as of twenty-four, twenty-five, we spent all our bond money. So, developer fee, I really have a good news, especially for Donna, because I still remember you asking me questions. We are running very, twenty-four, twenty-five is, is best year for the developer fee. We receive, we receive over seven hundred two thousand dollar developer fee. And then, plus interest come out eight hundred forty-six. That is highest developer fee received after I submitted the report to you when I first come here. Because average our developer fee collection is a little bit around two hundred seventy thousand dollars. But this is definitely, twenty-four, twenty-five definitely big year, big years, big year. And the county facility is just a little bit balance we have, so not that much. And then, capital outlay. So, right now, we are spending capital outlay, which is fund forty, fund forty. And, and then, plus the twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, the new issuance, try to finish our, our project. So, the challenger, I think Ms. Real mentioned that the letter from the County Office of Education about deficit spending. So, I will provide additional information. There's a letter, this journalist said that L A U S D expect one point three billion with B. One point three billion dollar deficit and through the twenty-twenty-eight school year. And what is the cost of the, of the deficit spending? Here's the reason why, this one I add, because I think this probably another one reason. Number one is L U S D, per the report, say that per student's budget increased two hundred twenty-nine percent. So, that is cost increase. Students down twenty-nine percent. What does that mean? The twenty-nine percent is the revenue. The students' population is decreased, the revenue decreased, but meantime, their costs increase dramatically. Look at staffing, their staffing also increase since twenty twelve and thirteen. That exact reason why the deficit spending come from. But L A U S D is not the only one. There's another article back to June seventeen, say that San Diego School District, it's not only one. Several more San Diego schools facing second year of deficit. Twenty-four, twenty-five is their second year. And I'm happy to report, Board, although the county said that ongoing deficit spending, no, 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 no. Twenty-four, twenty-five is Temple City Unified School District's first year unrestricted general fund deficit spending. Twenty-one, twenty-two, the first year I come here. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, the Temple City Unified School Unrestricted General Fund, when not deficit spending, it's on our book. Unfortunately, we can't escape, escape twenty-four, twenty-five. Why? I already explained, one point oh seven COLA and all the cost, the inflation. I'm interested to see which school district did not deficit spending. And so, not only California, tax school. Tax school deficit spending continue to increase. There are starting deficit back to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Twenty-two, twenty-four mean is twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, guess what, twenty-five, twenty-five will be definitely worse. That is our challenge, that's why, the reason why I personally look at it. I personally approve legal financial system each vendor payment. Because that's important, we don't, we don't want to pay more, we don't have to. That is the procedure. Next step, we have to do, adequate requirement, legal requirement. We're gonna sign, we're gonna submit the report on before September fifteen, that's adequate requirement. And then, we will look at the carryover for various program, and we will report to the board in the September twenty-fourth board meeting. And then, we're starting the audit for the district for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then, first interim, in back to December. And we're actually see what happened in twenty-five, twenty-six. What is the COLA the state will give us? Where's my beautiful picture? This is, any question? That's before, that is before, right, Jerry? That's before we kick off. Actually, this is a picture for me, we did take, take a talk to where we kick off the June sevenths, twenty-two, twenty-four, the kickoff game.
All right.
That is Friday, don't forget.
Yeah, yes.
Any question?
Well, first, we're gonna make a motion, so can I get a motion to approve, please? Okay, motion by Member Espinoza, may I get a second, please? Seconded by Member Smith, all right. Do my fellow board members have any comments or questions for Ms. Wu?
I did, I did have a question.
Go ahead, Donna.
I was just wondering, do we have an update on enrollment?
I, I give update right now. So, our enrollment is, right now, is five thousand two hundred eighty-five. Unfortunately, we're thirteen kids less compared with last year's census data, which is October, when, October, the first Wednesday of October. So, right now, it's really not apple-to-apple comparison because I'm, I'm using this, right now's data compared with the first Wednesday of October. So, enrollment will continue change, but I hope more kids showed up. But there's a possibility we may have around ten kids less compared with last year.
Okay, thank you.
My question was, so the developer fees?
Yes.
Are they restricted on how you can spend that money, or is that unrestricted?
They are restricted, number one restriction is on facility. Number two restriction is have to be grow. So, so which mean that the developer fee, the generation of developer fee is the community facility, you know, build a house, and, and as expectation, you have more family moving and have more kids, right? So, as far as our school grow in population, we can use this developer fee for the project. For example, fortunately, we are, the Temple City High School, the students' population increased. This, right now, twenty-five, twenty-six, our enrollment is more than eighteen hundred. So, that is high there last, last school year. So, for example, some of the project, our food house, Dr. Kuna mentioned that, we really can. So, that is our backup fund. If we exhaust the fund forty, and then, we can use that. And then, we already checked the legal council, it's confirmed we can, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments and questions? Okay, all right, let's go ahead, and thank you very much for that presentation, by the way. Yep, gonna be a tough couple of years, but hopefully, things will start to look up. Let's go ahead and vote on this preferential vote, Member Munoz.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the approval of bond measure survey agreement with True North Research Incorporated, and Ms. Wu, I think.
Yes, I think Dr. Kuna wants to say something.
Sure. So, the reason why we're putting this on now is we need to start getting community input with regards to what are the needs of the community. If we, and if there's interest in going out for another bond measure, our hope would be to have this survey, or have this company brought on board, develop the survey, have it out somewhere around December, before the new calendar year, so that we can start to plan and put everything into motion for the November twenty-six ballot. This company that we selected has a, there, well, first off, there are very few companies that do this work, but this company has a relationship with the company that we have for the next item, but also, they were cheaper than the other company, so cost was also a factor in that.
Sounds good, sounds good, thank you for sharing that. I will make a motion to approve this. May I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member Sneed. Any comments and questions regarding this company?
Are we gonna get like overview of what they're going to be doing, or?
Yes, we'll have them come in and present to you guys.
Oh, okay.
Okay, very good. All right, so let's go ahead and vote. Preferential vote, Member Munoz?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have item twenty, approval of bond feasibility and strategic communication service agreement with Team Civics.
Yeah, as Dr. Kuna mentioned that, when we try to prepare for the November twenty-two, twenty-six bond, and the first thing is very important is we assembling the team, team of consultant who can help, help us. So, the True North Research Fund is the first fund for the survey, so, so survey. And then, second fund is the bond flexibility, flexibility and the strategic communication. So, this firm actually is played a very critical role, so they are guiding us in the entire process. So, they, they will do the three phases. Phase one is feasibility assessment, and the second one is better measure development, and development. The third is phase three is public, public information. The firm's expertise is do the better measure. How to certify worth, how the better measure to clearly reflect the district need. And they also help us to reach out to the committee, do the survey. They are work closely with our survey firm, and also were guiding us the, the next steps. So, the fee is the three phases, the fee is first one, phase one is flat for fifteen thousand dollars. The phase two is six thousand seven hundred fifty per month. The reason we stretch this way, yes, because we know there's certain work they need to do. So, we are not interested based on hour, then we are just do flat, flat fee. The next phase is sometime depend on the result. Some result is, if the result favorable, we may move forward. But if the result is not unfavorable, then we may stop the work. So, by monthly fee charge, we'll give the district flexibility, depend on the, the community feedback, then we will strategically to, to work with this company.
And just to add, kind of like what Connie was sharing, you know, if it's really favorable in the community, there's, we don't have to necessarily wait until November of twenty-six. There's also a June twenty, uh, June twenty-two, twenty-five, no.
Twenty-six.
June twenty-six, we can do. And so, that would be something that it would save us money in the long run, but we'll just have to see what the community interest looks like, and that's where the survey will help us. But a couple of things with, with regards to Team Civics. They've had good success with the, the school districts that they worked with. But the one thing that I really appreciated is the person that we would be working with, she's also an attorney, and so helps to make sure that everything is done the right way. And so, I appreciated that side of it, because I know there's always a lot of interest in what happens with bond measures. And to have somebody that has the legal background to support us in that area too is beneficial.
Sounds fantastic.
Can I ask?
Oh, hold on, can I?
I'm sorry.
Let's get a motion real quick. Want to make a motion, Mary?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
All right, no problem, and I'll.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, seconded by Member Espinoza, but sorry to interrupt you, Mary, go ahead.
Yes, please.
What is the percentage that we would have to hit for approval?
So, to pass the bond is fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five.
But depending upon what the interest is, you're really, kind of in where she was talking to us, you're really looking at about somewhere in the high forty to fifty percent range is, is kind of where they feel like, okay, if it's there in the interest survey, then we think we have a good shot. Obviously, if the interest survey comes back even higher than that, that's where they start to talk about, okay, maybe you need to just move forward with it sooner rather than later, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments from my fellow board members? All right, okay, let's go ahead and vote. Preferential vote, Member Munoz.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have item twenty-one, approval of sub-staffing service agreement with Swing Education Incorporated.
Yes, and the purpose of service agreement is try to adjust, continue shortage at our food service department. So, this company actually specialize the sub for the education, and then, they are, they are not only for the classified employee, they also provide for certificate employee too. And they are, it's the, they are headquartered in San Francisco, and they are, they are, currently, they provide over one thousand schools, schools for the subs, not only in California, in Arizona, in the other state. So, I bring this company on board, and then, when we look at their fee charge for the cafeteria based on number one need, it, and it's around, it's within the ranges. So, this will give us additional flexibility. So, when our program grow, then we will have a backup for, for this agency to help.
Thank you for explaining that. May I get a motion?
Sure.
Moved by Member Smith, I will second that. Okay.
I have a couple of, I have a question.
Yes, absolutely, please go ahead, no, no, please do.
We usually use Ed join for hiring, correct?
Yes, that's a recruitment, the district initiative.
How is this different, what is the benefit of going with a company rather than having our H R?
I'll answer. So, we, we struggle to hire food service people. So, we've increased hours where we talk about the, where they're placed on their stepping column as they come into us. It's just a difficult position to hire for. And so, we
And so we continue to run into roadblocks. We hire and then people start the process and then don't finish the process. So this is really a stopgap. We will continue to hire for the positions. The positions are still all out there and as we fill them, we'll need less of the subs. But it's also the day to day subs, if we don't have a large enough sub pool. So cafeteria worker Connie calls in sick today, this is an instant call and then Stone will show up for it.
And this is strictly for food services right now?
Yes, this is, as of right now, yes, this strictly for food service. It's because we, the food service lot worker, their schedule is a half day, is only two to three hours. So it is, it has been very difficult in the last couple of years for us to find those subs. So this by being an agency, we, their subs and then have a long term and a short term. So give the district flexibilities.
And look, reading through their materials too, it seems like they take care of all the background checking, the fingerprinting and all that. So they, they're taking care of a lot.
Yes, they also use.
Information that we usually have to go through on a new hire.
That's true.
Technically, technically, they're not employees.
That's correct, they are just, they're an outside agency side.
They just have the resources and they can send them out.
Correct.
It's probably, and my assumption is it's beneficial for some people to be serviced, serviced this way, to be a sub because they can get jobs at a lot of different places and make it like a full time, you know, situation for themselves and be able to provide for their families. So I get it.
Yeah, yeah. And the other benefit is the company use the app. So they basically pay sub on a weekly basis. So that is just like add another benefit you mentioned that they have flexibility, just go online, they want to say I want sub. So the computers automatically maybe assign them and they will get paid on the weekly. So I think this is probably mutual benefit.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, Haley for food services. That's pretty good, okay. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, let's go ahead and vote on this preferential vote, member Munoz. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Next we have item 22, approval of teacher local assignments for the 2025, 2026 school year, Mr. Vol.
So we approved the bulk of these at our last meeting. We wanted to include Katie Arigie on there for her auxiliaries that she does at Oak. And so we just, we added that one more on there. So she's teaching one, one class out of, or one course out of her credential area. And so it allows us to do it for PE.
Got it, okay, all right. May I get a motion please?
I'll motion.
Motion by member Espinoza, second by member Smith. And you know, I want to thank Ms. Arigie for all the years of dedicating so much of her time and auxiliaries for the students. She's without question a fixture at Oak Avenue for that.
At the end of the day, we have our teachers teaching our kids. We don't have walk on coaches, these are our people. So it is, it is well worth it to go through the paperwork just to get them there for our PE classes, our PE credits.
Yeah, I agree, it's the best possible scenario. Any comments or questions from my fellow board members now? All right, let's go ahead and vote, preferential vote, member Munoz. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Next we come to our consent agenda portion of our meeting, routine items approved by one motion and one vote unless a member of the board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. Are there any items that we need? No, okay. Very well, let's go ahead and make a motion for that. I'll make a motion for that, can I get a second please?
I'll second.
Second by member Smith, okay. All right, okay. Preferential vote, member Munoz. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. And next we have item 28, board comments. Do my fellow board members have any comments? Okay, all right. We don't have, oh, oh yeah, no, he's coming, yeah. So we do have one item in our future agenda items, which is a presentation and update on campus security.
And if you don't mind, we're planning on probably November for that one, so.
Sounds pretty good. Okay, and back to our additional public comment on agendas and non-agenda's. And Mr. Jan Bazin is helping to share some words with us.
Jerry, you won't call your own camera since you did a great job with that photo?
Oh, man.
I'm sure I can't afford her.
Oh, man, okay.
Good evening, board. I'm excited on a few levels tonight, two of them especially, and that's the grand opening, soft opening, I guess, of the stadium Friday night. It's like 15 months in the making, it's not quite done yet, but I'm telling you, it's amazing. I was happy to document it, a lot of it, so it's going to be amazing. I think I was telling Dr. Kuna last meeting, I don't see how you could have done this with the amount of money that you had. I mean, as I look around, it's amazing, everything, so it's exciting. The next thing is the bond. I am 100% in favor of the bond. I remember working on it with some of you 12 years ago, 13 years ago, standing on the corner of Temple City Boulevard in Las Tunas waving signs for people. I own two pieces of property in Temple City. Nothing gives me more pleasure than to look on my tax bill and see that indebtedness every year because it's money well spent. I shouldn't say this, but as a business owner, I'm enjoying the benefits of increased property values, not because of our sparkling business district, but because of the schools. So I really appreciate that, having two daughters go through the system and graduate in 88 and 91, so it's amazing. But I still remember 2012, going to Cloverly School, looking around, seeing the peeling paint, the broken windows, windows falling out of the paint because of the putty wasn't there. And what an improvement of our district and it is $128, $128 million, well spent. So congratulations whoever did it, took a long time, but it was well worth it. So I hope it goes through and I hope our citizens realize the value of another bond to complete what probably should have been done in the first place. But thank you so much for all your work.
Wonderful, thank you Jerry for your very kind comments and I believe we can't agree with you more and please invest in our community. By the way. All right, okay, I'm not supposed to say that, okay, anyway. All right, final item, which is adjournment. So may I get a motion please? Moved by member Smith, second by member Munoz. Right, okay. All right, preferential vote, member Munoz. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you very much, we are adjourned at 6:40.
6:43.